Mr. Chairman, I believe we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. Good evening and welcome the October 25th, 2020 meeting of the Newtown Township Board Supervisors for Come to Order. Our sincere apologies to all the folks in the audience and those that are watching. We had a rather long executive session to discuss three separate legal matters. And then we had some minor technical difficulties to get the tape running. So with that, we are here. Mr. Nice, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Non.
President.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Ms. Roberts, like Cat.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Phil Terry.
Here.
Your solicitor, engineer, and manager are here.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. With Halloween approaching and lots of small children out on the streets in the dark, please let's keep all of our kids in our prayers and thoughts tonight so that we can have a safe Halloween with no incidents. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have before us this evening's agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval or consideration of any changes.
No move for approval.
There's a second.
Second.
Which was made by Supervisor Roberts, like Cap, seconded by Supervisor Altieri to approve the season's agenda as written. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those are favorable, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda are the minutes from our October 11th, 2021 meeting. I trust everyone's had the chance to review those. I'll entertain a motion for approval or consideration of any changes.
You can motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Which was made by Supervisor Altieri, and a second by Supervisor Roberts, like Cap, to approve the minutes as written. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those are favorable, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have a 2022 fund overview. I believe I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lafayette. He's going to briefly give us the revenue.
I only brought the long-winded version tonight.
Have a gavel.
So once Steve's ready, we'll get started. Yes. So to this point in time, we've showed the proposed operating budget, proposed personnel budget, proposed capital budget, and also the general fund revenues. Now, we're going to bring it all together with some of the remaining funds that aren't the general fund. So starting off with our streetlights, streetlight revenues traditionally have approximately about $51,000 in revenue, and we're projecting ending the year roughly in the same range. The primary revenue in streetlights comes from two areas. The first is homes that are located in the streetlight districts, and the second is an interfund transfer from the general fund. The transfer occurs because some residents that don't live in the streetlight districts also benefit from the streetlight, so it's just on West Chester Pike in 252. So we traditionally, over the past couple of years, have been bringing in about $11,500 from the general fund over to the streetlights to represent that. The two major categories in the streetlight expenses are traffic control devices and our debt service. Traffic control devices is made up electricity and repairs. This year, we've been fortunate to have very minimal traffic repairs. Keep our fingers crossed for that. So see, we're projecting coming in under where we are budget in 2021. The debt service payment you see every year is the interfund loan agreement that was entered in 2017. Everybody remembers the capital fund and the streetlight fund internet interfund loan agreement to pay for the LEDs over a 13-year period. This is just the annual debt service back to the capital fund. So overall, with the projected revenues and expenses, the revenues exceed the expenses by about $10,500. Using our fund balance projections, we think we're going to end the year at about $107,000, and then using the additional 10, it'll be about $118,000 in 2022 projected fund balance. Much like the streetlights, our hydrants are also comprised of two major funds. These two, I'm sorry, two major categories, this is the use of fund balance and the real estate tax revenue. Our residents located within the hydrant districts, which is about 780 feet from hydrant, are charged the hydrant tax. As you can see, our projections for 2021 are not going to meet our budget, and this is because of a late adjustment that we made in early 2021 after the budget was passed. In previous years, there were some neighborhoods that paid for their own hydrants that the township was taxing for. We actually backed them back out, which reduced our revenue about $7,500. So we're not going to meet our projected budget for 2021. As you can see, in 2022, we have some increases into where we're projected, but we still don't think we're going to go back to our original. The increases aren't because of millage rate adjustments, it's just from some additional assessments that we know are going to come on the books in 2022.
So the hydrant fund, what does that pack?
Moving on to hydrant expenses.
What is, what expenses do we have for hydrants?
So the hydrant expenses are just hydrant rentals from Aqua. We pay $75 a hydrant. We have about 290 hydrants in the township that we rent from Aqua to use.
Why wouldn't every resident pay? You mean if there's a fire and you live over that, you're not getting water to your house?
I believe it's second-class township code. You cannot charge anybody outside of 780 feet from a hydrant.
So he's correct. For example, if beyond 780 feet, we're going to have to bring water into a tanker or something else because you wouldn't be able to run the water line. We're fighting a fire.
Who's paying for that water?
For what water?
Bring a tanker, and that costs money. Who do we, does the town pay, or does the resident pay? Who pays for the truck? Saints. I mean, just like the fire hydrant, the reason you pay the tax is because there's no way to meter the hydrant. There's not a meter on a fire hydrant, so they just go with, it's just a gamble.
The water's in the truck.
Yeah, but it's a gamble, it's a gamble, right? They say it's $75 a fire hydrant. They're earning that there's only so many fires per year where they're going to supply water.
Okay. We can't charge the residents above, beyond 780 feet of hydrant.
And so all the developments where you backed it out, they pay for their own fire hydrant tax?
Correct.
Separately from us?
Correct. So you'll see an increase of about $13,000 here. Aqua actually has a 20% increase proposed in front of the PUC at the moment. So we have the budget. Hopefully, it doesn't pass at a 20%, and we can, you know, reduce some of it, but that's where we're at with hydrants.
It's specifically for the hydrant.
Yeah. So overall, as you can see, we're proposing using about $31,000, $32,000 in fund balance, which will leave our projected fund balance at about $1,400 at the end of 2022, if that's how we choose to balance the budget. Our ARPA, or American Rescue Plan Act funds, this is the money from the federal government that all the towns have received for COVID. Received about $730,000 in 2021. We'll receive another $730,000 in 2022.
So I can keep it separate. So is this the, were these the funds that were received from after the COVID relief through the Biden administration, or were these the funds from when the Trump administration did?
I believe this is the Biden.
This is Biden.
Yes.
Is there anything left from that? I mean, are any left? I know that we had a fight with the county now that money released to us. I will be the first one to admit that I haven't followed up on it since we sent the letters to the county, and I believe that they did start to disseminate that money to us. Did that ever come to fruition? It never came to fruition.
No.
So what was the amount of money that we were out after we declared the state of emergency? Give me a rough ballpark.
Approximately $50,000.
We were at $50,000 when we declared the state of emergency under the auspices that we were going to receive that money back. And under the prior administration's kind of structure, I went to the county, and the county was supposed to disseminate that down to us, and they never did. Is that correct?
Correct.
Have any municipalities received any COVID relief money from that initial COVID relief bill?
None that I know of.
So is that how? What are they doing with that money? Is that how they're paying for all the other?
The last that I heard, they sent out a survey to all the local townships. We all filtered out, we gave it back to them, and that was kind of where it ended.
I mean, I've heard they've talked about doing things for small businesses. They've talked about doing a variety of other kinds of types of support to, I mean, like you can help nonprofits, you can, I mean, there's a lot of things they can do with that money to help other organizations. But we've seen none is, and we've gone together through the COG, asking for assistance, we've received none. And then went through FEMA and PEMA to file, and the last I checked, out of the 50,000, we were down to about 7,500.
Seventy, they whittled us down to 71.
Seventy, they whittled us down to 7,100 that PEMA and PEMA would cover. So at this point, the township is roughly about $43,000 left.
But to put it another way, and I just want to make sure I understand this, because like I said, I apologize that I didn't stay on top of this. So the initial COVID bill was passed. We might have issues with the way the legislation was written, where it goes to, I think it was counties over a population of 500,000, I believe, is what that threshold.
To distribute out to municipalities.
And then the counties were supposed to distribute that out to municipalities that declared state of emergencies as we are combating this COVID pandemic. This county council has not released any of that money to Newtown Township or any other municipality in this county. Is that correct?
I can, I can speak for sure that was, none was given to Newtown Township. My understanding from my colleagues that I've talked to, I don't know of any that have received money at this point.
Well, that is, by any stretch of the imagination, disgraceful and infuriating. I guess the follow-up I have is, what are the other municipalities doing to receive the money that is rightfully theirs?
I believe we're all kind of in this spot of, the county keeps saying they're going to, they're evaluating what they're going to do, and we're waiting to see if and when the county will do anything. I do not know of any actions that have been taken by a group.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to the money that we did receive. There's some very strict guidelines on what you're allowed to use this for. So there'll obviously be some discussions that this board needs to have on what the dollars would be spent for. But overall, it can, there's a lot of infrastructure projects that it's allowing. It all needs to be spent by the year 2025, so we're proposing $500,000 in next year's budget, the 2023 budget, and a 2024 budget, so it's all expensed by the 2025 deadline.
And you're showing it under stormwater?
This is actually under the, the fund that they suggested.
Our recommendation would be that the township look at investing it in stormwater. We're not showing it under stormwater. You have freedom to do, there's certain freedom that you have, I say freedom. Freedom within the guidelines that the federal government has given. But it is clear that if you do an infrastructure project like stormwater, that's an allowable type project.
Excellent.
And that would be the staff recommendation.
Yeah.
So the next one that we have is the no proceeds fund. This is the remaining from the 2020. I'm sorry, I skipped a slide, but it just showed the fund balance and it thinks expense. At the end of next year, it'll end up with approximately a million, $500,000 each year. Moving to the no proceeds.
If I, if I don't mean to interrupt you, but just real quick, the one thing I would say, we don't want to spend more than $750 in one year because of audit reasons, and so that's why we broke it up.
Moving on to the note proceeds, this is the remaining from our 2020 note bond, which was used for the road program. We would recommend spending the rest of this. This is kind of restricted to road and road improvements. So George can figure somewhere to spend $171,000 out pretty quickly when it comes to road and road repairs. So as you can see, we plan on closing the fund out after 2022, and the money's expensed. Much like the note proceeds fund, the bond revenue is the remaining money from spawn building or take the bond for building construction. There's about $67,000 left. We would also recommend spending it. This money is also isolated for building projects such as the library patio that we talked about, the roof, things along those lines. And again, we've closed the fund after 2022. War on Drugs, this is the money that we received for the seizures and forfeits from the police department. They are asking to spend $5,000 from fund balance, and this is for bulletproof vests. As you can see, with projections, we will end the 2022 physical year with about $16,000 still in fund balance on the War on Drugs Fund. Police donations obviously comes from police donations. They're also asking to spend about $5,000, and this is for some additional training, in particular, the use of force training. This will leave about $37,000 in fund balance at the end of 2022. Open Space Fund, Open Space Fund comes from the contributions from developers. We're suggesting using about 47, I'm sorry, $74,900 in fund balance next year. And the primary expense here would be to put in some parking lots at the Meadow Preserve. Next fund would be our stormwater. The revenue comes from a contract, I don't want to call it a contract, a fee that the township requires residents to pay for 10, 10-year ongoing stormwater inspections. We're going to budget $50,000 like we have in every other year. 25 of this is for the NPDES permit and acronyms, as well as $25,000 for ongoing stormwater inspections. At the end of 2022, we're projecting about $212,000 in fund balance. Liquid fuels revenue, liquid fuels revenue obviously comes from the state, needs to be used for road and road-like improvements. We're suggesting using 133,000 in fund balance. And the only expense that we have for 2022 is our debt service payment for the 2020 borrowing. So after you spend the fund balance to balance budget in 2022, you're looking about $200,000 remaining in fund balance of stormwater, I'm sorry, in liquid fuels. So I just wanted to put this up there. This is a
Rich, I'm sure you move on now.
Sure.
We're going to have a fund balance of 204 in liquid fuels, and we're getting about 320, 330 every year from the state, so that's where we're showing that 500,000 in 2022 proposed, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That and the use of fund balance.
Yes. So I don't want to go through the whole capital fund, because we did a whole presentation on that.
Right.
Everybody's familiar, but I wanted to break it down a little bit different this time. As you can see, these are our one-time capital items that we always talk about. These are the items that we suggest taking from fund balance because they're not ongoing expenditures. The two that weren't in the last presentation, they came in after, is a $75,000 expenditure for the fire company for a hose tower and $152,000 for some breathing apparatuses. So overall, it's about $1.3 million in use of fund balance.
And I think the 15.
Oh, yes. In addition, we also are proposing to put some streetlights in of about $50,000. That wasn't in the last presentation as well.
And we'll talk about that a little later tonight.
That's one of the agenda.
Yeah.
So we had our one-time capital fund. These are general fund. These are more of our, we call them our operating capital. These are recurring capital. It's your road program, it's a lot of your replacement programs. And overall, it's about $535,000 in a transfer from the general fund over to capital fund that we build in traditionally every year.
Rich, what's the road program again? Can, it's our ongoing road?
Yeah, sure. So back in 2017, we started putting $50,000 away, $50,000 away. We added an additional $50,000 every year, and so at this point, we're up to about proposed $350,000 in 2022 with the expectation that will be where we need to be to fund an ongoing road program between 350 and 400,000.
And we've had this since 2017.
Correct.
It's a savings, so that when public works is ready to go, when it's deemed the roads to be repaired, veteran are control of the township, not the state roads, like Bryn Mawr Avenue or Westchester Pike or 252 or Goshen Road. Yeah. Although I do see you guys packed some stuff along the roads that connect into Goshen, because Goshen is such a mess. So, but we appreciate that.
And I would just make note that this, this is combined with the liquid fuels dollars to give us what we need. We have roughly 52 miles of roadway in the township. We've determined it takes, that a road at the most lasts about 25 years, and the idea would be that we would have to do a little over two miles of roadway every year. And it takes about $600,000 to $700,000 to do that, and so that's the reason for this number.
And as we go, I'm sorry, and as we, as we've been repairing the roads with this.
Yes, we've been, we've been using this money along with borrowing to accelerate where we are today.
Yep.
Right, we, we recognize that we need $600,000, $700,000 here to maintain our roads in good repair. State provides just like half of that to you through liquid fuels. So we recognized in 2016, 17 that we needed to put in that amount also, so that was giving us that $600,000 to $700,000 a year to do our two miles of roads that we have to do every year in order to keep everything a good state of repair.
Thank you.
So just a quick fund balance recap, if we, if projections that we spend everything that we budgeted this year, as well as the 1.3 in fund balance that we're proposing for next year, it'll end our fund balance at about 6.9 million at the end of 2022. And I just wanted to give some quick general fund updates, mostly on the expenditure side. Since we gave our operating presentation, we went back and we really looked at some things that we thought needed to be added. We added about 37,000, yeah, 37,500 for stormwater. This is aside from Eileen's task of mapping everything out. This is just engineering, contracted maintenance, supplies, things along those lines that we would handle, stormwater in-house. We actually added the exact same amount, 37, 500 for some tree care, removal, treatment, things along those lines. Another major thing that's changed in the personnel side, we always budgeted a 3% increase, but the cost of living looks like it might be a little bit higher than three, judging by the things that we're hearing. So that's something that we're going to need to go back and evaluate. And last but not least, recycling, but we're going to get into that later in tonight's meeting, so I won't steal their thunder.
Any questions for Rich on presentation?
I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I'm just, I'm going to go back to this, the stimulus, or excuse me, the COVID relief money. So the COG, what is, what is COG doing? Are you guys just having conversations among yourselves, or is there a coordinated effort to go to the county and see if we can get this money? I am not trying to grandstand by any stretch of the imagination, but what frustrates me is that we and other municipalities are not communicating, it seems, to the county in a unified voice. I know that this board has sent letters to county council, and I'll be the first one to admit that I apologize that I left my eye off the ball on this one. I thought that we received the money, because I saw them giving money out to everyone and anyone, saving the county. But I suspected that we got what was lawfully ours under that legislation. But since that has not occurred, is there anything that COG is doing? And if there isn't anything that they're doing, is there anything in addition to us sending another letter? Or, you know, maybe us, John and Ed, when I say us, just John and Ed, reaching out to county council to see if there's a way that they can get a meeting to represent at least Newtown's interests in hopes that maybe these other municipalities can get their money. I just can't, I find it hard to believe that we're not hearing more about this. For $50,000, I get it, isn't going to make or break this budget. But the fact of the matter remains that we did everything that, according to the Department of Health and the CDC, to keep the residents of this community safe. We declared the state of emergency, which is consistent to whenever we need to receive federal or state funds. Legislation was written to provide that relief to us, and because they want to play some sort of game up in media, we are being deprived of that, along with the other 48 municipalities in this county. I mean, I have a huge issue with that.
Well, let's not forget that we did spend the money too. I mean, we, we bought the screens, we supplied different things, we changed the way we did things. We had cost expenditures for extra cleanings and things like that, so we did what we had to do to meet those requirements. So you have a good point there, Mr. Altieri.
But I will say this. We went the first time together with the COG and did it with the, kind of the full force of the COG behind us, trying to say, we need this. And that's when they came out and did the survey. They basically came back and said, well, we'll have to see. We haven't made a decision how we're going to distribute the funds. Then we went back again about the same time that the ARPA money came out and said, we're still waiting for a response on the, on the original request that we had for the money that was spent back in 2020 and the early part of 2021. The county came back and said, basically, you all have received ARPA money, that should cover any expenses that you had. And our comment back to them was, that doesn't take back for the, that doesn't change the fact that the money was given to the county, just change and give to, potentially give to local municipality. It wasn't a requirement, but it, it, it was one of the ways of helping local municipalities. And then the comment came back, well, we're still in the process of deciding exactly how we're going to do it. I do not believe that, that we're going to be part of that consideration. I could be totally wrong, but I don't believe so. I know that our, our fire company did a really, I think, superb presentation, explaining even the needs of our fire, our local fire companies, not just Newtown's, but within the whole county system and what their requirements were, and they've received nothing either.
I mean, I know, I think we also sent letters to our Congresswoman and our senators. My understanding is that we did hear back from one senator. I mean, I have no problem even one of us going and, or the board, again, sending a letter to our federal representatives and even setting up maybe a meeting, because I don't understand how they can sit there complicit, knowing that the county, I mean, our how our county isn't delivering the money that is, that is ours. So when I say ours, I'm speaking to 49 municipalities that are out of that money.
That spent the money.
Yeah, and that spent the money to, you know, in accordance with the, with the guidelines that we had. So I get this doesn't, for one thing I will ask, Stephen, please keep this on your radar and keep us oppressed this. Again, I will take full responsibility that I let it off my, my line of sight there. So I can see how some people might suspect that this is being brought up, you know, a week before the election, but it's just that I completely forgot that there's, I honestly thought the amount that they're spending and giving out that we received the money that was, you are. So I would recommend to this board that we send another letter to county council. We sent another letter to our federal representatives urging not just the money, but if they would have a sit-down with some authority or representation from this board in this township in hopes that we can, we can get it going. And then ideally, if we find a solution, you know, you can report it back to COG. And, you know, these other municipalities can get the money that's owed to them.
And I don't think the timing is inappropriate, Mr. Altieri. Here we are talking about budget. Well, this is a, it's a budget, no.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a big amount, but as you pointed out, we spent this money. We did what we were supposed to do to meet the burden of COVID, and that's what this money was supposed to help us do, and we still don't have it. So yeah, it's an appropriate time to talk about it. This is budget season.
Right, but they, they have the benefit of using, use of our money, of our funds.
So Mr. Nice, if you want to, I don't know that we did a resolution.
I've got to write.
Draft a letter, and I know I'm available, and I know Mr. Partridge was nodding his head. If any of these folks want to sit down with us, especially in the county, we'd really like to sit down with them and at least ask them their face, what's, what's happening here, because this is ridiculous.
And again, to be clear, because I know I have a tone when the way I speak, but this is not adversarial, any stretch of the imagination. It's just, this is being presented to us, and I just don't see how we have not received money. Our federal officials on both sides of the aisle, in my eyes, are being complicit in us not receiving that. That's my rant.
Got it.
Any other questions for Mr. Lafayette? Remind any folks in the resident or any residents in the audience that we're not taking comments on the budget right now. We'll be doing that at a future meeting when we do the formal budget presentation, and that will be on the agenda advertised.
I'm ready.
All right, moving on then. Thank you, Rich. Well done. Reports. We have a report for our police department, Chief Long.
Nothing yet.
Hey, we have a report for our fire department. Hey, we have a report for our fire department, Chief Everloft's not here. Uh, Mr. Sharers, anything to add to your report?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Rescheck, anything to add to your report? Mr. Lafayette, anything to add to your report? Uh, we have a library report, uh, leisure services, Rich, anything to add? Township engineer, Eileen.
Nothing to add.
Beautiful.
Okay, I have a question on, on that. Um, when we spoke, when we had the meeting back in August, and we did the motion to do the stormwater studies, uh, my understanding is that we would have a report, um, back to us on where we are with the drainage sites.
Are you talking about the capital?
I'm talking about the. We made a motion back in August, it would have been August ninth, to do the capital stormwater. Um, it actually says here, consider approving the capital stormwater capital plan. Um, and if you remember at that time, my frustration understandably is that I don't want to keep telling the residents coincidentally as it's raining, that we're doing another study to study another study. And I wanted to get an idea when we were going to get shovels in the ground or at least get a good picture of the overall elephant. So we could, in the words of Supervisor Robert Sycap, start taking bites, bites out of the elephant, right? My understanding is that we were going to have, um, a report by the end of the month, the end of the month in October.
And that's, I have in this report that October thirty-first is the capital plan.
So you, you went figurative, literally to the end of the month as opposed to the last supervising.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
So we will get that, what, on Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
I will be more specific. I have a lot of respect for you, but I will be more specific that I mean the end, the last supervising meeting. When I say end of the month, I will make it more specific, uh, that it's that last supervisor.
And we'll give a specific date.
I will, I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Eileen? All right, moving on. Mr. Neese, you're up.
Yes, I'm, I'm, uh, going to jump on a couple of quick things and, and then we'll spend a moment on the last one. One of the things that's come to our attention is a possible new product, potentially, I'll, I'll call it a product, uh, is this thing called Coke Notes. Um, it is designed to help with mental health, uh, struggles that people just have in, uh, the amount of people that deal with depression and, and those kinds of things is pretty high. Um, and so the purpose of this, uh, would be that, um, there would be, basically what this group does is they have a daily push out of information to your, uh, through a text message. I have a moment trying to remember what it was, uh, to, uh, whomever the recipients are, uh, for, uh, the purpose of trying to understand, you know, just trying to stay healthy. And I, uh, they did a test run with me, they did it for a week, it just kind of saw what it was like. Uh, and they, you know, they talk about little things that you can do to help reduce stress and those kinds of things. And so one of the thoughts, uh, that I kind of ran through, but I wanted to just get some feedback, uh, was potentially offering that to the township employees. Uh, it would cost about ten dollars employee a month, uh, do that, which works out to about four thousand dollars a year, I think is what we looked at. Um, so, uh, i- in the realm of where things are with mental health, uh, with the number of people that are struggling with stress and those kinds of things, it's a pretty small investment. But at the same time, right now, we're looking at whether or not it could fit in the budget, uh, for next year. Just wanted to kind of let you know, we're looking at that. I'm not committing that we're ready to propose it because I'm looking at the total budget and it would, but if there's room, that is something that we would like to consider adding. This.
Anything that makes her, helps her step, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like it could be numbers.
Yeah, and, you know, it, the good news is we don't have like a big increase in health insurance, so this might be a year to consider. Um, the other one, uh, the other thing is that if you'll recall, I believe it was last year, twenty twenty, um, again, a little fuzzy on some of what the things we've done and the dates, but we refinanced the bond for this two thousand sixteen. Uh, and we did that to take advantage of the low interest rate and we actually saved, uh, roughly about, I, I recall, I think almost a million dollars. And so, um, but the call for the bond didn't come till this year, so we had to pre-fund that call. In order for TD Bank to release those dollars, uh, we have to actually say it's okay to release the dollars. Uh, based on your actions, I've actually signed a letter saying it's okay to release those dollars. I just wanted to be full public transparent that we have done that and that we've authorized TD Bank to pay those funds out. Uh, because you actually gave me the authority last year, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood we took, taken that step and we've done that. Uh, the next thing that came up, uh, and we've met and talked about this pretty extensively since it's gone in. If you'll recall, about a month and a half, two months ago, uh, we came in, a group came in from, uh, Gather, Gather in the Circle, and we came together, we said we were looking at, one of the things was looking at traffic calming in the circle. Uh, and we had a plan that we presented up on the screen, talked about the fact that they were going to come in, we were going to re-line, uh, the, the circle and that we were going to do this. And I know, um, since it's been put in, we've heard a variety of comments, uh, about how it's eliminated parking, how it's, uh, doesn't look so great and all of those kinds of things. I just want to be clear, uh, on a couple of things with it and, and I know both, uh, Supervisor Altieri and Supervisor, Supervisor Roberts, like, we're a part of the conversation last week as we discussed this and they may want to add to that. But, um, one, the, the parking issue, I just, so everybody understands, actually, there is no parking in a circle. And if somebody's parking in there, that was, they were just doing that and, you know, uh, so, um, the other piece, uh, that I want to remind everybody of, this is a temporary testing, uh, for that. Uh, I know that people feel like the bollards look a little bit like construction, um, and I understand that. Uh, we're adding some planners this week, hopefully to help soften that a little bit. Um, the other piece that I just wanted to share is that it really is meant to be temporary. All from a standpoint of Public Works, uh, and us looking at it for the purposes of snow removal and all of those kinds of things. All of that will be taken out, the, the, the lines will stay on the road, uh, because we're not going to repaint the lines at this point. But the bollards and even the flower pots and whatever's there will all be taken out by about the middle of November. And so we just, we just want to make sure that we under, people understand that this is a test. There's going to be a, um, a survey being sent to, out where people can go take it. I don't say being sent out, but it'll be available for people to take and give feedback, uh, about this and, uh, what we were trying to.
So I was one of the ones that communicated, if you don't remember about this, but it, I mean, it is what it is. Um, and mid-November, yeah.
The, the, the bollards come out and the planners come out, the lines will stay in place.
Right, and then we're going to discuss sometime after that. Potential longer term actions.
Correct, uh, and we make, we may say, let's test something different. Let's look at moving the traffic out to the edges and making a bigger circle. Who knows what will happen?
I know I communicated, but I'll express my.
Okay.
And this was done with, along with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning.
It was.
And they've done, and they've done this before in, in, uh, communities. And there are monitors, right, in these, uh, in, within those, um, signs, I guess the speed signs or something they've tracked. I think that they, I, I don't know the technical, I just know that they've put monitors in, uh, for traffic counts. So it's, it's part of a whole study.
Yes.
And it's until, as Ed said, till the middle of November. And I, and I know that you said, Stephen, that you had the fire company come out and drive the truck around the, um, circle and it works.
Yes.
Way it is right now and also the sub to bus.
Yes.
And sometimes the buses cut people up, but that's what buses do. I get cut off every single morning on Market Street by the buses. They're big, you're not, you're going to stop, so.
The bus will always win.
Didn't click the barrier.
Yeah. So, and, and it is temporary, it is for monitoring, uh, for a long-term solution.
Yes.
This is not a long-term solution.
I think it looks great. I mean, I, maybe I'm at an advantage that I can envision what it would look like without the bollards or the, I think the bowl bouts there are going to give us some more pedestrian space. I just think it looks good, you know, I couldn't wait till we, uh, actually put the improvements in there, I think it really cleaned up the circle, but.
You don't think the bollards.
No, the bollards themselves, but it's temporary.
No, I mean, that's.
The only thing I'll add, so I'm late to this party. This is, you know, Supervisor Roberts, like, has been doing a great job with representing the Board of Supervisors, um, with Gather, to gather in the circle. I personally think what they have done, um, is it aesthetically pleasing? No, it might not be aesthetically pleasing, but we have heard consistently from residents and business owners alike that they want to see traffic controlled in that area because of the speeding and the dangerous merging conditions getting into the circle, as well as residents who want to see more pedestrian accessibility in that specific location. You know, I get change can be scary at times and something that's uncomfortable for us, but the only way for us to achieve mutually beneficial goals is to study it. And the only way that we can study it is to go through this process. We do not own that material, it is one hundred percent temporary, will be gone by the mid to end November. Um, but at the end of the day, we'll have enough information going through this, uh, to come up with a plan that is safe for both the business owners, vehicular traffic, as well as the pedestrians. And then the only other thing I just want to add, I know that Supervisor Roberts, like, Mr. Neese, Mr. Seligson, met with their business owners, dropped off flyers to them, uh, the township at least dropped off flyers to them. There has been communication with the business owners, along with gathering the circle on the township. There's been a cohesive, collaborative approach to solving the concerns that all of them have. A, one way or the other, we'll have results and if we move forward, we move forward, at least we took the time to study it. As opposed to just throwing our hands up and saying, that's the way it's always been. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to thank George and Public Works, they've put a lot of time into that. And, um, and to make it look as pleasing, aesthetically pleasing as they could, but it's what it is. It's, that's, it's an, it's got to kind of pop out at people, right? So that, that they know that it's there.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Neese?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to, not saying anything else tonight.
It'll be done, just, one last thing, it'll be done by the time for the, uh, tree lighting.
Yes.
Which is December, the Sunday, first Sunday of December. Yeah, December fifth, um, the tree lighting at St. Albans Circle, so I'll plug that. Those things will be gone by then.
Any questions for Mr. Neese? All right, moving on, payments, we have one item. Uh, I had the opportunity, I'm sorry, because this is a, for, consider approving a thirty-nine dollars sixty cent escrow release payment to Midlantic at thirty-four Rees Avenue for completed work. About offer me a motion. Second, anybody?
Second.
This is made by Supervisor Partridge, second by Supervisor Altieri to approve item nine point one. Any further questions or discussions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously out in ten, our bills, had the opportunity before the seed meetings meeting to review the bills on the check register dated today, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventeen cents. Is my recommendation and motion that we approve those bills, do I have a second?
Second.
This was second by Supervisor Partridge. Any further questions and discussions on the bills? Any questions, discussions on the bills, remember to the general public. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is item eleven. Really might need, Mr. Mr. Russo. Just in case Suzanne getting him or?
Not for the reason.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Why don't you do a, a roll call, starting this? And then. And you'll know if you need it.
All right, we're going to, we're going to skip item eleven point one right now until we get Mr. Russo back in the room, just in case. Uh, item eleven point two is consider approving the advertisement.
Oh, it's eleven, sorry.
Yeah, eleven point two, consider approving the advertisement of the unexpired positions on the planning commission and municipal authority as follows. Planning commission position expiring December third, verse twenty twenty-two, the municipal authority, uh, position expiring December thirty, verse twenty twenty-three. Have a motion to re-advertise those positions.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
This is made by Supervisor Roberts, like, second by Supervisor Altieri to approve item eleven point two. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Questions, remember to determine public on the motion. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item eleven point three, consider approving the advertising of all boards, commission committees and council positions that will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, would everybody like to offer a motion for that advertisement?
Make a motion to approve?
Your second.
Second.
This is made by Supervisor Altieri, seconded by Supervisor Partridge to approve item eleven point three. Just as a matter of clarification for everybody, item eleven point two were two positions, one on each of those boards that had, already had vacancies. Item eleven point three is for the advertisement of all the positions that will actually expire on December thirty-first, in addition to those two vacancies.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I just want to note too. We purposely separated these out like this time, last time we actually advertised everything together, we did it as one advertisement. We're going to treat this as two separate advertisements, hopefully that we'll get somebody that we can fill those positions right away for you to appoint, maybe it's early, it's beginning of November, and then the other ones will, will be for the board to appoint in January.
Okay.
The only thing I, I meant to add this, the, for the first, for the last motion, excuse me, but for anyone watching this, you know, either now or later on, we, we need individuals to step up and serve their community. It's a very easy process, you don't have to give us a resume anymore, it's just a letter of interest. Uh, you go through an interview process with the liaison and another supervisor and, and it's, you know, one meeting a month. Um, so if you have any interest whatsoever, I ask you to reach out to the township and get more information, but we need individuals to step up, um, and serve the community. So I know this is a time where people don't want to because of the vitriol that's being spewed, um, all over the country. Um, but it is a very admirable endeavor and I think you will find it rewarding and comical and frustrating at times.
Well said, Mr. Altieri. Our motion was made on item eleven point three and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven point four, consider approving the participation in the streetlight program with DVR PC for the installation of new streetlights in the St. Albans Circle area.
So, um, if you'll recall, uh, three years ago, or?
Twenty seventeen, we installed.
Twenty seventeen, we installed, so probably four years ago, or something like that, five years ago. Uh, the township entered with DVR PC with, uh, multiple other municipalities to replace all of our streetlight, uh, heads. And, uh, we came back with LED lights and we did that. And so we're seeing savings in that, uh, process. One of the things that became, that came aware to George and I and probably some others, when we had the event, uh, that we did at the circle, back in September, as it started getting dark, we realized how little street, how few streetlights were actually in the area uh, and how quickly it got dark. So our recommendation, uh, we happened to, I don't know if George just happened to see it or if it was something that somebody reached out to us, DVR PC is doing another program just like they did, and we had the opportunity to kind of piggyback on that. And George went out and counted and said, the most that we would add would be twenty-five lights in that area. Uh, that would be going down both, that's not twenty, that's not twenty-five all around the circle, that would be like, blow up. But, you know, we, we could light up the whole town. But, but one of the things, uh, that this, what we're looking at on this go-around would be that these lights would be adjustable. And so the, the potential that, like particularly as we were starting to clean up, as it was getting later, it was getting kind of dark and people were still walking across the streets. Or when the event ends, we could actually turn the lights up, uh, have, uh, have it really be safe for people to leave and, and do those things. But even during the event, if we want to kind of keep it, the lights down and have some ambiance and all of those kinds of things, we could do that. So these would be adjustable lights, probably have a time that we keep them on when we're not doing events, uh, but that. And so, uh, we think they're needed anyhow, but this would be specific, we would do the variable part to allow us to have some additional.
And we're talking about running them down the legs of the circle.
We're talking about running them down, uh, chapels, uh, St. Albans roads and, uh, I guess it's still St. Albans.
Yeah.
Go the other way.
I'll move for proof.
Your second.
Second.
This was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like, sorry, call for a vote, I guess, one consideration, and maybe you're already thinking. Sorry, call for a vote, I guess one consideration, and maybe you're already thinking about this. Is there any thought to the type of streetlight? I mean, we're not talking your typical Cobra head, are we going to talk something, since it is in the circle, we're trying to approve certain, we thought thinking something ornamental or something like that?
We we were thinking for the circle itself, maybe we would do something more ornamental going down the the roadways would be just.
Right, but I'm thinking in the circle, we have like an ornamental light, maybe that'll enhance that whole feel of gathering in circle.
Yes.
And then it'll help with the businesses as well, because it's transitioning, right? Those, there's a lot of, well, there's vacancies there from businesses closing or. Sudden changes.
Yeah.
And so that would help businesses as well.
And I would just tie this back, thus the 50,000 that we put into the budget for streetlights that you saw, that was extra out of capital, that we think that would potentially cover this cost.
That's great. Our motion was made in second, and any further discussion from members of the board? Any questions from members of the general public? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Just moving along in order and we'll come back to the bids. 11.5, consider accepting recommendation of the Trails and Greenway Committee to approve the PennDOT multimodal grant to install connection sidewalks from Westchester Pike to Bishop Hollow Road along Ellis Avenue.
Actually, we're really approving the use of the PennDOT one day. PennDOT multimodal grant.
Right.
For that purpose, we've actually received 650,000. We anticipate that this will cost somewhere around that range. COVID may change that a little bit, because the things are costing a little bit more, but it was basically, if we looked at our, you looked at our Trails and Greenways master plan that we have done, this was one of the sections. And this was one of the sections that we went out and we, if you'll recall, we went for two different grants. One was, both were about 2.5 million and we were awarded 650,000. We didn't think we wanted to build out $5 million worth of project using all of our funds, so we came up with a project about 650. We'll also probably have some expenses towards engineering to do this and potentially some additional construction costs. We won't know that till we get into the actual doing of the project, but this is what, this is where we think is the best spot. And I have to say, I just, George and I were incredibly impressed with the process that the Trails and Greenways Committee used to make this recommendation to their team and then to you. They did good research, they looked at this from a real holistic point of view and said, we'd like to see more trails, but this sidewalk is key to helping us make connections. And so I just, I I we're glad to bring this before you from their recommendation.
And that'll also help with the traffic calming along Ellis.
We we do believe that it will help with traffic calming along Ellis.
At least it'll be safer for the pedestrians.
Safer for pedestrians, it's a win all the way around.
And it's side over the east side of Ellis Avenue.
That's my understanding, right, east side?
Far side, we're on the west side.
Park side.
Goddard School side.
Right, I mean, it hasn't been designed, but yes, I mean, that's where there is some existing.
So it'll connect Westchester Pike right to our trail here that we just, we didn't have that, which connects us right to Bishop Hollow Road, the township building, great idea.
So Steve, high level, process wise, how does this work?
So if you give us, go ahead today, George and I will be reaching back out to the to the grantee or grantor. We are the grantee, go back to the grantor and getting approval for this section. Then we will need to appoint and have the engineer start to do the design. I'm assuming, you know, you'll give us direction to do that at the next meeting. We will then get the design done as quickly as possible and then construction hopefully would start sometime in early spring, maybe summer. And because we need to use those dollars, if I recall correctly, by the end of 2020. 20, I'm sorry.
George is like, really?
Like I said, like I said, I'm having a hard time speaking today, 2022, thank you.
And multimodals brands are for sidewalks.
Yes.
And it's specifically. So this would probably fit in with what they deem as.
I think it's great.
Or put it within our existing car path.
Yes, and the and the other thing, it's kind of an outside piece that we're going to use as a as a as an additional push to hopefully get PennDOT to approve with this specific piece. Is the fact that part of the widening process of Route 3 is actually going to put sidewalk in front of the section between the Goddard School and where it goes down. And and between, yep. And so this would actually give a completion to that whole loop in that way, and I think that's a real benefit.
That's great.
So moved to get it on the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
This was made by Supervisor Partridge, second by Supervisor Roberts, like Cap, to Roberts, like Cap, to approve item 11.5. Any further questions or discussions from members of the board? Questions, discussions, comments from members of the general public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Final item of new businesses, consider accepting or rejecting the bids for the recycling RFP, Mr. Neese.
So as you recall, you asked us to go out and do an RFP for recycling for the year 2022, 2023. And then we had two alternate, or two, not alternate, but extensions. We did also have an alternate to bid it from biweekly to bidding it, or I say biweekly. Twice a month, I think is the best way to say it, to be clearly bi-monthly. To to do that like we have today or to do weekly pickup, we received the bids back. And I don't have the exact number in front of me, but one was 422,000, the other was 450, I believe it was 8,053,000, something like that. And so both of those were, they were bid out in that way, we shared that information with you. The, it as as you may recall, our current budget for this year was 228,000. We had put a an additional amount in for the 22 budget, but we only put in about 247, 250,000. So I, you know, that's where we are, and so that's why these, this is for you tonight with where we need to go. I will make note that our contract runs out in December with our current caller, who happened to be the one bidder who responded. To our bid that we I just brought up.
All right, so so currently, with the bids that we receive bi-monthly like we do now, is almost double what we pay now.
Correct.
And for another $30,000 roughly, we can go weekly.
Correct.
But we're still talking double what we pay now for recycling.
Correct.
We received one bid and that's from our current vendor.
That is correct.
How many firms picked up proposals?
George, I'm gonna let you answer that for, because you may know that more specifically than I do. I have an estimate. There were 22 entities that downloaded documents, there were six that we would have anticipated that would have bid on it. But again, JP Mascara was the one that put in a bid.
So we had 22 people pick up and six answer questions, the only one actually.
Six that we anticipated, there were a number that asked questions. I think it was, I think it was four that asked questions. Six that we anticipated would have probably bid on it, and again, one that we did get bid, 22 downloaded.
Okay.
One of the things that typically happens, just so you know, a lot of times, particularly with something like this, trade magazines download it and those kinds of things. So we kind of rule those things out. So I just wanted to explain why you went for 22, about six.
I didn't think there's 22 trash dollars in this area. What's the board's pleasure? As I understand our options, we can reject the bids, we can accept the bid, I think that's our only.
Put a motion on the table, I mean, this far exceeds our budget. So my motion is to reject the bid.
So moved. Your second.
Second.
Made by Supervisor Partridge, second by Supervisor Roberts, like Cap, to reject the bid received for the recycling RFP. With that rejection, would we be authorizing the township to again reissue RFP or do we need a separate motion for that?
I got a separate motion.
Okay. So where's the board want to go with this? Any discussion? All right, no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you a resident of the township? Thank you, but no. All right, any other comments from general public? All right, so Mr. Neese, I'm going to do the roll call.
Mr. Partridge. I'm sorry.
The motion is to reject.
Yeah.
I voted.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Ms. Roberts, like Cap.
Yes.
And Mr. Russo. Mr. Altieri.
No.
Mr. Non.
Yes.
As I have it, it's for one.
Okay.
Make sure I heard everybody correctly. Say that we rejected that.
We rejected the bid. I think at this point, we need another motion now to advertise, to authorize Mr. Neese to readvertise the contract to see if we can attract more bidders and any other changes we need to make.
So Mr. Chairman, based on taking this action, as I understand the sunshine law, I think what we want to do is first have a vote to amend this agenda at this point. To do that, just because I, we're going to have to republish the agenda tomorrow morning.
That's right.
So if we can have that vote first, I think it falls within what we're allowed to do.
Yes.
Based on where we are, the we'll, if we can amend with one vote to amend the agenda to to have an action to advertise for, readvertise and rebid the recycle. And then we'll do a vote for that, please.
I'll make a a motion to amend the agenda to add 13 dot one under additional business. To to advertise a.
No, no, you're making a motion to amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda, sorry.
I think he has to make the motion on what he's amending.
Yeah. He was correct.
Yeah, so amend the agenda to include a item to to advertise recycling bids.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
This was made by Supervisor Partridge, second by Supervisor Roberts, like Cap, to add an agenda item to readvertise the recycling RFP. Any questions or discussions on the motions from members of the board?
Yeah, I guess the question I have is, you would, since we're amending the agenda now, to go out to get other bids, Stephen or I guess Mr. Catania, do we need to specify what bids we want? Since we're amending it now, I would suspect that the motion would have to say that we want weekly and biweekly.
This motion or the next motion?
I would think, well, if you're amending the, you're amending the agenda, now we're getting parliamentary procedure, right? You're amending the motion to.
You're amending the agenda to add this item. He's amending the, the motion on the table is to amend the agenda, correct?
Right, right, all you're doing is adding an item. The details are coming to next motion.
Doesn't it have to be part of the motion?
It'd be part of the next motion.
Okay.
It could be part of the next motion, just your, your, the motion is now to readvertise, correct?
That's.
Mend the agenda to readvertise, yeah.
Any further questions from members of the board on that motion, to amend the agenda? Questions from members of the general public to amend the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, all right. Mr. Partridge, would you like to go back and state your motion again?
Yeah, I would, so under 13 dot two, I'd like to make a motion to advertise bids for recycling. With the inclusion of two options, one for twice monthly and another option for weekly. So those two options. And also I'd like to put in that motion that the bidder can stipulate the the days, the schedule for the actual recycling.
Non-rotating.
On rotating.
Provided they are responsible, also notify the residents.
May I, may I please make a recommendation?
Sure.
If we're going to do that, then I would recommend that we do two separate bids. I believe that if we're going to advertise for both weekly and twice a month, we want them to be both completely separate.
Okay, two separate bids. They pick the schedule.
Yeah.
And they notify the resident.
You understand our direction.
I I under, I understand.
We'll take a vote on the weekly one first, and then we'll do the, you want separate, right? You want to vote on a weekly and a vote on a biweekly?
Do they need to vote separately? I just wanted to do separate bids.
It's gonna be all part of one motion.
One motion.
Okay.
I want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Okay, well, I just, I think it can be one motion and I, any clarification on the duration of the contract?
Perhaps we should just, I mean, being in the current state of affairs, it seems to be changing on a daily basis, maybe we should just be looking at a shorter term or one year term with additional years. As alternates, and then we can decide to accept or not, or no, you're thinking the other way, Mr.?
Yeah, I mean, I personally would vote against that, but it's up to.
What do you think?
I I think that, given the state, I think that it's just going to continue to go up. I would say three years. One of five, you guys can vote me down.
What do you want to do?
I would say the contract for three years.
I would suggest a one year, a two year alternates, and then be saying just a whole three year contract. Well, Mr. Partridge, it's your motion, so what do you want to put in there? You get a second, then fine, if we have to keep voting, that's fine, if you don't get a second, okay, so what's your motion?
Steve Murray.
Okay, the motion for Mr. Partridge was readvertising the recycling contract. Actually, readvertising two recycling contracts, one for bi-monthly services we have now, one for weekly service. With the options to for the contractor to set the schedule as long as they provide it on a non-rotating basis that they provided, that they notified the residents. And each contract would be one year term with two one-year alternates, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion? All right, that motion's going to fail for lack of a second. So would anyone else like to offer a motion now?
Exact verbiage, but a three year term.
Okay, Mr. Altieri has a. Made a motion for the exact thing except for the term, and he's suggesting a three year term with no alternative years, just three year term flat.
Whatever the the board wants to add in, a one-year alternate, two-year alternate.
When we start with three year term, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
This was made by Mr. Altieri, seconded by Mr. Partridge, three year term. Before we get into discussion, Mr. Slusser, are we still good with this?
Yeah, they have the bids advertised, have two separate ads, allows us to accept. A single bid if the board decides to go a certain way.
Right.
You don't have to decide tonight whether you want to go weekly or biweekly. By doing a separate bid, you can select at that time, this is the way we want.
And that makes sense because we'll have a better understanding of cost too, perhaps in more pure sense as to what that might be, so.
Yeah, like I said, especially because the board's rejecting the, it rejected the bid tonight because of budget reasons. And that's why you're doing this, and that makes all the sense.
The motion that was seconded was for a three year term, any further discussion from members of the board on this?
Just one quick clear, this is still with a schedule up to the contractor, but it is a fixed schedule.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not changing yearly, it's saying, if they want to change it from Thursday to Wednesday or Thursday to Tuesday, it's up to them to notify. I understand you correctly, it's up to them to notify, and it's staying like that for the entire period of their contract.
And if they want to do one fifth of the town one day a week, that's okay too, but they're responsible for notifying the town subject to your.
That's what my understanding is, I just want to make sure that it was with this one as well.
And it's for weekly and biweekly.
I understand that, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Well, no further discussion, any further questions from members of the general public? All right, seeing none, motion was made and seconded, I think everybody understands the motion, Mr. Neese. All right, seeing none. Motion was made and seconded. I think everybody understands the motion. Mr. Neese, let's do a roll call again.
Ms. Roberts, like, cap.
Yes.
Mr. Russo. Mr. Altieri.
Yes.
Mr. Non.
Yes.
Mr. Partridge.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Neese will be readvertising in the near, near future and have some of those next meeting?
We have, well, gotta get it, we gotta get it loaded again and do all of that. I hope to do that within forty-eight hours and get it out and get the process going, so we can get a quick response.
Fantastic, all right. We have no old business listed. We took care of the additional business.
I have a question.
Sure, more comment, go ahead.
Well, I don't know if this is directed to Tyleen or to George. He have a resident in the Heights that has a lot of power outages, trees from his neighbors fall on his lines, wants to run conduits underground across the street. Is that allowed or not allowed?
I can briefly say that utilities underground are acceptable.
There is a resident who recently put a road opening permit in, and he has been told we're not responding to it yet until he gives us some plan as to whether Pico is comfortable with that, and as of this point, he has not submitted any electrical plans or, or the other permits that he would
So what, do you, you need Pico to give him a letter of saying that they'll, they'll service him that way?
So right now, the, the request that came in was just to put a conduit underground, but there was no detail as to what that conduit was gonna, how it was gonna be prepared, whether Pico was even comfortable with connecting power under our road through such a conduit, again, with no detail or anything like that. So he was asked to provide more detail. He was asked to confirm that Pico was comfortable with that kind of a, a situation, and whether the code department had any plans as to what that conduit would be utilized for on the other side. So, in other words, you know, what electrical plans did he have for his property, so that we would understand what exactly it was. So it was not, no, it's literally sitting on hold. Once we have that, I suspect the township engineer was gonna be brought in, certainly the code department.
Hey, thank you, George.
You're welcome.
Answer your question.
That answers the question, thank you.
Any other board comment? At this time, we have an opportunity for comments from the public on items not related to the agenda. If you wish to make a comment, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in adjournment. Appreciate everyone taking part. Remember, election day is Tuesday, November second. Polls open from seven, eight, and to eight P.M. at the same locations that happen in the primaries. Please vote, and thanks for coming.